Just in other. The like the size of that roundabout.
City team, you're muted suddenly.
I'm just curious if if the state itself would look at does the fact that these are not really important freight borders affect how they design? Like how much space they're taking, how big a roundabout they're making for that intersection.
I would say yes, because it's not a T one or T two. But no, because it's not priority. So can a semi truck make it through from shoreline Kenmore Law on the major arteries? It it should backer that in, but elsewhere in the city, it's more of a local territory.
Okay, thank you.
So if I heard you correctly, Sam, we accept number two, but number one, maybe it's criteria for street projects, not as appropriate, maybe as as absolutely necessary, as required, as needed.
Yeah, I think so. I guess I read that first one to be, you know, should we have a policy of promoting? You know, considering freight needs, you know, for prioritizing street projects. I just don't think that should be a major concern of Lake Forest Park either. They don't want to be promoted as, you know, a freight ground.
Right.
You know, to the extent we need to, let's consider it. To the extent freight or transit plans are happening, you know, they're going to create conflicts. We ought to consider consider that.
Uh huh.
But the first consideration is way stronger.
Uh huh. So Christine, I think maybe the tone is that we we do what we need to do, but let's not. Let's not get fancy with it. Let's not try and and get an A plus here. We just need to check the boxes. So we don't have a strong desire to create a a robust freight program.
Okay, I got it. Minimum requirements plus uh safety recommendations.
I I would like to see language that that strengthens, um, you know, protecting, you know, other reasons. I know it's it's stated at the top, but I really would like to see that stronger that protects, uh, you know, harmonious, you know, harmonious other use of multi modal units of like bikes and walkways. Uh, if, you know, if freight has to be in it, fine, but really also including strong language that has to be balanced and promoting harmonious uh use of other multi modal.
Okay. Let me, I'm making some notes as we go, so bear with me just a moment. Okay. All right. Thank you all. The next slide. Addresses non-motorized transportation. So this is the safe and welcoming environment for walking and bicycling.
Definitely check.
Yeah, no, no issues.
Great. Reducing the need for new improvements through efficiency measures.
I I guess the only comment I have relates to some of the demographic data and other data we were presented at our meetings months ago, and I just, there are just, not that this isn't a good recommendation, but there are so few employers of any meaningful size here. I just wonder, should we be spending? You know, whatever resources, whether they're political or financial on on that beyond something really basic. I mean, it's a great idea, but it just seems a little weirdly placed for like first part.
So I was a Yanni on this. I think we do the required and skip the consider. I still think it's worth Mark's team's time to have to come up with a program for the number of employers.
That's.
Most of the workers we have are working from home anyway, so.
Yeah.
That was one of fair and fierce questions, and we confirmed there are no. And so, and I put a check mark because there's no issue. Can we change that to lukewarm? In other words, I want to be certified by PSRC, but that's it.
Yeah.
That's what I wrote too. It's like, is this meaningful?
We heard your suggestion. Heard your suggestion.
Check.
Okay.
So sorry, can I go back one more slide and just comment? Um, what could it be possible just to include? Sorry to divert that, but to include our newly acquired park as well. I'm not seeing anywhere in the comp plan, uh, anything with regard to that.
Well, I'm sorry. Uh, can you can you state that again? I you were just a little quiet and I don't think I caught everything.
No, no problem. Uh, so incorporated selected projects, but can you just somewhere in the comp plan that uh mentions our newly acquired park?
Oh.
Yeah, just it'd be nice to also have that mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we had some plan or some city plan or policy about kind of promoting safe transit parks and connecting them all. Didn't we talk about that in the past? So if there's a plan or a policy on that, maybe that could be included. Maybe it was on the book for the parks.
It was mentioned in the plan, yes.
Okay, I've noted it down. We will also be talking about that more when we talk about the um parks recreation uh and trails element later this year. Um, okay, any any other comments on the commute trip reduction situation? I think we're all, it sounds like we're all consensus there. Tell me to go back if I if I misunderstood.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh resilience, transportation system resilience. How are we feeling about this? Um, are we thinking kind of minimum necessary for this phase of work and then more uh more fully developed approach with the climate element?
Yeah, we have a check on this one. Yeah. Sounds good. Extend your.
Changes in transportation technologies and mobility patterns. Vehicle electric electrification um support.
This this one is an exclamation point. I've seen it update, um, delete parks and rec centers and go with town center, et cetera. And then words submitted for the private gatherings places.
Good question for follow up, probably for staff, because I don't know our code that well. Do we provide um any incentives for people who are, say, having to add some electrical infrastructure to their house for charging electric vehicles? Or do we reduce permit fees? Do we do we require permits for electrical work? Yes, because I had to.
And then we'll have the new building codes that have stronger codes, but really I think it's going to be the climate action plan and implementation items that captures.
Yeah, I figured that might sit better in the climate piece, but I was just curious about that because sometimes, you know, there can be significant. If we want people to have electric cars and put in the safe and code compliant electrical, they might need some incentives to do that. So maybe something for a follow up. Uh, so that sounds like more of an action item, so not a policy maybe, but um, so I don't have any problem with this. I was curious.
I did have one other comment. Uh, I kind of how do you guys feel about it? And it perhaps would be nice to see something about supporting, uh, you know, providing like uh electrical infrastructure for multifamily zoning as well. Uh, anyways, just I thought this would be a good place to put that as.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Uh prioritizing multimodal investments specifically around high capacity station areas um with a with a recommended consideration for improving access at town center.
Check mark on this one.
Oh, the check mark, the notes are uh neighborhood connectivity and mile connect connectivity and multi.
Okay.
We also just put mitig and mitigate like mitigate, you know, SR five twenty two dominance, just have that language just out there. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
What do you mean by that?
I mean, because it's not, it's just a habit stated, um, um, mitigate SR five twenty two to really truly promote multi modal because it's uh it's it's really that six lanes of high traffic that is making it very difficult despite the fact that we do have a sidewalk there. So technically it is multi modal, but um, you know, perhaps, you know, balancing mitigate to to weaken attenuate the high traffic areas to actually, it's just landscaping, really, just the buffering buffering that high traffic so that those sidewalks can become more useful. But I think to just say mitigate the uh the dominance of uh, you know, high traffic along SR five twenty two to support, um, you know, more reinforced multi modal transportation. I I, you know, something along those lines, just.
Okay. I think I got it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, the policy requirement for identifying racial and social equity as a core objective when planning and implementing transportation improvements, programs and services. And uh the recommendations to consider prioritizing inclusive outreach in the transportation planning process and creating equitable corridors that provide safe and inviting travel for all people regardless of mode, age or ability. This one had a check mark next to it.
And it's also multi accounting planning policies. So to some extent, this is to get our transportation related items certified, but it has the opportunity for the vocal word.
Just so you all know, I mean, I have robustly made in my case, so I'm not going to bring it up every single time. You know how I feel. Is, I mean, i- is there something that someone will put forth that's alternative language? Like, is there a way that maybe it's softened in a way that? Well, it, you know, it's 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 philosophical for me. So, yeah. The, I mean, the rubbers were charged with having to put something in there. I I agree, and I and I do think that it opens up legal issues because if 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 that is the core objective when planning and planning transportation, well, if someone can prove that they were inequitably treated in that planning, I think that will potentially be illegal, but I guess we find out. So we find out and tell them what's out. It, is there a way to say, is there objection of create equitable corridors that provide safe and inviting travel for all people, period? Is is that not check the box that we need to do for equity? Just like create corridors that provide safe and inviting travel for all people. But then rather than calling out, you know, the differences amongst people and 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 even with mode, age or ability, that that doesn't capture all people. So. Yeah, so I think the racial, I if if it's also said, you know, well, we will um identify like gender and so we only wanted men to be or women to be trained, then I would also have, you know, objections to that. That doesn't seem to be an issue. Gender is involved in here, so it's just, so I'm sorry, I I said with that to say, I'm not going to say, say it every time, but.
There's one thing that comes up to me, I heard of, uh, it was, no, it was a I can't remember what it was, um, but 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 all nations in this world will be, one in six people will be over the age of sixty like very soon here. Um, and so when we are thinking about uh equitable corridors, we don't always think about age, but we're all aging, like the next two years, we're all, many of us will be close to that age. And I'm just thinking, if we take that like are we not preparing for a future that's in that? I don't know. I'm just going down. I'm not not that you have to answer that question.
Yes. I I think that we can have that, you know, prioritize without using that, because I think that word equitable has baggage of, and it is, um. So I and I don't think that it's necessary. I think that we can say, we we, you know, that we want to prioritize inviting travel for all people, regardless of mode, age or ability. I mean, that's
I like that.
I totally agree with that.
Yeah, I like that.
I'm seeing a thumbs up. Do we miss Melissa?
Yes.
Oh, I see another thumbs up. Okay. Great. I like it.
Did you catch that Christina for the second bullet under considered?
Can um can you restate it just to make sure that I've got it down correctly? Or I can check the recording.
Yeah, basically strike the word equitable. So create corridors that provide safe. I mean, again, it doesn't have the racial aspect in it, so it's not a big deal to me. And I don't, I don't know what equitable corridors as opposed to just like prioritize prioritizing corridors that provide safe. I don't know how that.
But it's a good example. I think of kind of a, I I still think that we take equitable for that sense, to kind of just kind of start at least addressing some of that with that concern.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, I, how about create corridors that provide safe and equitably accessible travel or something or accessible travel for all people regardless of mode, age and ability. So basically that um despite what mode of transportation is selected or is uh is limited to whatever individuals that they still have that ability. Uh, it's it's not a hardship if they decide to walk from, say, point A to point B. Uh, but maybe in that fashion, create corridors that provide safe and accessible travel for all people, something along those lines. But I think that's the spirit of what is trying to be said. That talent will be. Yeah, and that some people may not have car of car and they have every right to be able to, you know, take some safe travel.
I I think staff's fine with anything. When we're sitting in the room with our certifier PSRC, I'm going to be sure to focus on the word halt. Doesn't necessarily have to say the 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 multi claim, I mean, planning policy, racial and social equity that needs to achieve that. And so for me, the word halt, impressive.
Okay, good. Thanks, Christina.
Okay, thank you. Uh, stormwater pollution. Uh, there's a follow up question about.
I think this one had writing.
And I think we wanted a.
Have some broad language resilience, baseline conditions, policy, stream protection, water quality discharge, facilities. City's doing an updated stormwater plan, monitoring cleanups, et cetera. Provide an example. As a broader example.
That one's still to be in discussion.
I think so until we get strike that underline.
It's, I I was just gonna say there there's there's so much that could be added to this. And at the same time, I I was just kind of wrestling with, again, I wasn't here, but just if I'm reading through these, wrestling with, okay, what things are covered elsewhere and what things really belong to the transportation element? I do think culprits associated with our transportation network should be in here. But separate from that, we should also be thinking about ways to address culprits as not part of our transportation network. So like even incentivizing private culprits to be fixed. So I I was like, okay, how how? How much weight does this one policy carry, which I totally support with my modification about lying rig? So it sounds like I missed a good conversation about it last time.
I'll have to listen to that part. That's just to to respond to your question, how much weight is this set? For me, it's, there's a lot of weight here.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is, if we look at streets, it's kind of like the the veins in our body.
Yeah, exactly. 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 Right. I just mean, how much of this trick, how much needs to be captured in the transportation element versus the environmental element versus the, you know, so on and so forth. But hey, the more the merrier. This is this, this is the stuff I do provide to be. So I'd be happy to see it fall around.
So we have a.
It just makes me weird. It sounds like a citizen comment that's fixing up streets sweeping. But I know it's from fair and fair is, and when it says specifically, it sure prioritizes it. And and then the danger for me to guess, is that really the fix? And no, it's not. It's much broader than that.
Yeah, I I mean, I I would maybe rather see a reference to kind of, and again, this is a comp plan document, not an implementation plan, but to, you know, kind of latest best management practices for reducing, you know, street based, transportation based pollution. Street sweeping is but one tool. Um, it's a, it's an important one, but there's also all kinds of, you know, how do you treat the runoff on the on your road shoulders? There's all kinds of stuff, so. Yeah, this was, I that struck me too. I was like, who put this in here like this exactly? So does one of these consultants live up here? I'm curious.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I know there are quite a few of us that spend some amount of time in Lake Forest Park recreationally. Um, mostly related to either the local one oh four or third place books, but um, yeah, I I'm not sure if any fair and fair staff live here.
The strikeout underline will be.
Are we, have we, are we talking about removing that portion for now? Are we going to?
I think we're, I think we're going to come back to this later.
What symbol you got on this one?
We were, we're smithing, but it's more the words.
Oh, yeah, including the information, you know, the 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 whole body of water, the watershed, you know, the all the streets, but also, you know, tying this to resilience. I think this is, if we're talking about resilience, this is where uh it that if we take care of our streets, we're going to take care of ourselves.
That is one of the comments, resilience, baseline conditions, policy to the question. So broader, yes, yeah. And then when we, when you get the strikeout hundred, like maybe even broader.
Yeah. But thank you.
All right, Christina.
Okay. Concurrent C vehicular and other non-motorized and alternative concurrency options.
Census lukewarm. Yes, R C minimum certification of this. Not sure.
Minimum.
I didn't have any new thoughts since the last time we talked. Did anybody else? Are we okay with just checking the boxes on this one? Yeah.
I I like that it exists and then later in implementation, they have to address it, but it doesn't say how they have to address it. And that bike should be level of service fee. So for me, it works to have included.
Okay. Um, this is the data stuff, so we should see this next time. Is there, does anybody have any comments or questions on the travel demand forecasting and the project lists?
Um, just for one second, I just want to play. So we have thirty minutes left. I know we have, but yeah. I know we have the climate element. I I do think it is important unless somebody feels differently that we do touch on our other pieces about community survey and then outreach plan, just so we don't let another month go by that we missed. Um, be good, but do you want, what do you want to do? Do you want to talk about climate a little bit or just jump into the other items?
I don't have any suggestions for climate, but those other items, other than, I can't wait.
Yeah.
They're literally borrowed.
Yep, okay.
So maybe once we finish transportation, we go to those other elements and the next time at the end, we come back.
Yeah, I think, are we done with transportation?
Uh, we've got, I think, yeah, two more.
Sorry, got really excited there.
I know, we're so close. Transportation is really big. Um, climate isn't quite as much. Um, okay.
Yeah.
All right, financing. This is probably another one where there aren't tons of questions.
And those thirteen and fourteen, I just have fair and feel fair and fair suggestions.
Yeah.
Okay.
So identify the sources.
All right. We're done.
That's why I was jumping.
Uh, okay, so you want to talk, let me stop me share. You want to talk about the quick updates on where is my agenda? Here it is. On outreach and the joint meeting with the Climate Action Committee. Is that, is that right?
Um, outreach broadly and surveys specifically as an update, then the suggestion from Climate Action Committee for joint meetings.
Okay, yes, um, we, so outreach has been admittedly slow with some of the changing requirements related to our grant funding for middle housing. Um, we wanted to make sure that we were correctly addressing all of those needs. So um, we now have the survey pretty much ready following a a great subcommittee working meeting last week. Uh, we are putting the final touches on that. We'll be sending out a link for those uh subcommittee members to test it out. And once that's ready to go, then we'll be pushing that out to the community. Uh, my goal is to have that out. Uh, it sounds, Mark, like we need to coordinate a community wide mailer, so likely um our time. I need to understand what the timeline on that is to know exactly when that survey is going to go live. Um, so Mark and I need to connect, I guess, specifically on the timeline, but I would say.
I have an email into the city administrator who's on vacation this week. When he returns, we'll have an answer that's related to where do we find the money? Separate from that, um, what would inform that conversation is, does the planning commission think the survey should be a citywide mailer? Or the other channels of broadcasting at the web, the e-blast, et cetera, um, suffice? The reason is for the funding question, do we really need it? Let's not do it if we don't think we really.
I want to say when we did the town center mailing, which was five or six years ago now, I think it was north of five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it was, it was pretty pricey.
We have an example postcard through the climate action plan. We could do a vendor. They need some time. We would do that formatting. It's essentially a QR code and it's the mailing that that is the expense. Uh, let's see, downside. If you don't do it, then the feedback that you get in the survey first level is it statistically valid most likely, but do you really want to rely on it? A city that hasn't done much visioning, like Lake Forest Park actually did last year, probably wants to do citywide. Are we on track? Should we throw the binder away and start over or are we augmenting what's already in the vision? I think that was answered last year. So it's not super critical, but if you want to maximize outreach and inclusion and awareness and avoid as much as possible those persons standing at the podium the night the council's going to take action and said, I found about out about this from my neighbor yesterday. What are you trying to do? That might be an advantage.
I'll just throw this out there for me and my perspective again. I I I come with views from having young kids and then parents maybe who are, you know, uh, able to come to meetings, but I also have a lot of family members that are sixty, seventy, eighty that are not on that TikTok, you guys have TikTok, I don't know if it's Instagram, all that stuff, um, that that would respond to a mailer. And so I do understand and I appreciate the expense, but I think it is a worthwhile expense to truly get the vision of this community, which you mentioned, I mean, it's it's an older community that really maybe doesn't utilize social media the way that certain age gap. So my vote personally would be to bear that expense and do the mailer for this important vision that is important to capture the.
I tend to agree with that and also. I tend to agree with that. And also because, you know, not only is it important, but this is something that's supposed to be durable for another decade or, you know, so. Okay, it's a one time ouch. And I understand the challenge of finding where to get that money, but I I agree. I think we should send it out.
Can can we do an insert with the newsletter or have like a one big kind of panel on the newsletter that goes out already? So it can get everything to the budget of existing.
Yeah, but all those available methods will be used regardless of a citywide.
Okay, so this is in addition to that you guys.
But it's the one method that goes to all the addresses we can get.
But the newsletter does not go to all the addresses or?
Oh, it's a subset.
Oh, that hundred, yeah, a hundred percent.
Can we just do a quick struggle?
Yeah, cool. All those in favor of doing the the mailer?
Yeah. It just helps me with like conversation. Like if we decided, yeah, let's do it. And then two weeks later, you guys were like, why'd you do that?
That's a good idea.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that is the the technology, but I think council member Bodie also indicated if if we could flush that out as much as possible ahead of the council, that would just give a lot of, heads up. I think that's.
Yeah, the more, more is better. As you get closer to the actual document, you need to refine, refine, refine. And every project that we do, every effort that we do, there's always somebody at that last hour, maybe legitimately that says, I had no idea this was going on. But we need to try as much as possible to at least say, but we did this and this and this and this. We tried to reach you. So I think it's up.
In addition to doing the mailer, I think we've also talked in the past about like, you know, are there flyers or are there little postcards or handbills that maybe you could share with us? Digitally, so if we print them out, we can take as a third place or organizations or members of just to amplify the message.
Yeah. I love that. Is that, that's okay. I think that's really credible, really important.
That what you'll get is a lot of more responses than just statistically. Subset of information, so it's not that. But yeah. I do. Thank you.
Um, okay, so Mark and I need to connect on approval for the mailer and the schedule for what that looks like. Um, and then we can send an an updated schedule for the survey out. Um, the next thing that we would be looking to schedule is, um, a workshop specifically looking at, um, land use, housing and infrastructure, uh, which should follow relatively quickly after the survey closes. When some of those housing options are still at the top of people's mind. The timing on that for, uh, is looking more like April, um, which I think will be good because we will also, as a group, have seen the, the next iteration of all of the housing stuff that we've talked about to this point, um, that also addresses middle housing. Um, and the, um, recommendations around that, uh, and we'll be able to fine tune it with the survey results. What people have have indicated their their preferences and their concerns are. Um, and then we'll be teed up for some additional outreach at summertime events, uh, to start connecting with people, related to the draft document and leading into the city council review process. That's kind of how things are looking for outreach right now, um, and a survey in particular.
Oh, sorry. First of all, I want to, uh, thank the people who were on the subcommittee for the survey because I was not. Um, but I would, I would, if it's okay with that committee, I would love to see kind of the pilot version, just so we could all kind of see it and get a feel for it. Um, if 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 that's all right, I think it'd be great if the whole commission got the beta version. Uh, to look at and kind of get a sense of it.
Okay.
Yeah, who's on the committee again?
Yeah, I think the the original concern with keeping the committee small was to avoid any kind of quorum. I don't think that that's a concern with piloting the link. But as you have feedback, just be mindful about how you're communicating.
Thanks. So so you said that something maybe in the next week or so. Cool. Keep an eye out for the link. Thank you.
Well, Christine, it's just a, so in in spirit of moving things forward, so the purpose of that beta would really be about, the structure of that and not squish the content, right?
Yeah, does it, is it working right? Or is it set up like the way that it's set up? Does it make intuitive sense for filling out the questions? Do the graphics read well on mobile? Like, that's kind of, we're looking for that that level of information. Um, and just a a side note, um, so, uh, I have spoken with folks at the city about offering a paper survey because I know that not everybody is going to have ready access to, a mobile device or computer where they would be able to take the electronic version. So that is something that we have thought about. Um, and that that'll be, won't be necessarily encouraged because it definitely makes data analysis a lot trickier. Um, well, not trickier, a lot more effort. But, uh, it will be an option that will be available to support broader inclusivity.
How long will you keep the survey open for?
I would typically recommend no longer than two weeks. Uh, we want people to know that there is a sense of urgency in filling it out. Um, depending on how long it takes the mailer to come together, I might leave it open for just ten days. Um, and I think that there have been some incentives that have been handed over to Mark that will help drive participation as well.
Without creating a whole new procedure. Is there a way to incorporate that or advertise it and keep it simple? I'm not worried about the incentive. I love the idea and we have it in place. I have no time to administer it.
Yeah, I think it'll just be a like, hey, if you, you know, with, if you're interested in entering for a drawing for this prize, leave your email here. We'll reach out to you after the survey closes and we've done the random drawing.
That'll get, and then the random drawing and the number will find a connection on how we do find a random number and which one that is in that.
Yep. Yeah, we'll have, we'll, um, each, uh, I believe that each survey response is entered, uh, with its own unique identifier. And so we'll just do a random number generator on that and pick the lucky winner.
If you can track our paper copies, then we have to enter that manually.
Yeah, so it will, it will get entered manually into the same survey platform that everyone else is using. Um, I'm not exactly sure who's the lucky winner of that particular job, uh, but those, those people will also then become an entrant. Uh, if they have selected that option.
Could we maybe pick it out of public meetings?
I'll see what we can do. I don't, like, I don't want people to see the messy backend of like the the administrative platform. That's the backend of the survey. Um, but at the very least, we could announce it at a public meeting and make it kind of a thing. Okay.
Have like Price Waterhouse Coopers, you know, audit our.
I can plot out a giant check on or a giant gift card on a whole core board and just like, here it is, who's the lucky winner? Yeah, we could, we could definitely make it fun. Um, any other comments on outreach? We're now down to sixteen minutes left in our evening.
Uh, just some background to close that and enter the next thing. Uh, there were four meetings last week, community action, maybe, tree board, city council. So we've begun that internal circuit. You know, and we brought along with climate every step of the way, especially in May and June, the city council preparing. So that's all underway. We're going to be with commerce and, you know, so very, very busy. But out of that mess last week, a specific suggestion was made by the Climate Action Committee to hold a joint meeting. And they talked about it for a while. They would really like it, but given your workload, we informed that we would come back, have a discussion. If you already have six special meetings, six regular meetings, then do as fast approaching. There's really not room to squeeze in it, but then we would talk as a group.
Is the idea behind that for them to maybe share more about the draft that we thought? Is that what their goal is or?
The goal of the outreach is, half one, incorporating the climate action plan to the greatest extent we can in, the periodic update. That will happen. And I thought Sarah would be here tonight. Then there's an urgency from that committee to start implementing the plan. That that won't be reviewed and approved till May, I believe. So that's the danger. The benefit is we're already starting down that course because it's relatively easy to incorporate the climate action plan into our drought, knowing where we're going to end up. Later in the year, to then sit with them, March, April, May, and start discussing the individual things for an uncreed plan. May not be the best use of your time. But they would like.
So I attended that meeting. And I do have to say that my preference is that we postpone that. Given that I think what we need to do, we need to let them have the time to go through Christina's recommendations. And they haven't yet done that at at the point that they were, they were at the point of that meeting last. Uh, so.
My personal opinion, I I totally agree. When I worked through this document, I mean, I know Sarah was here and and explained some of the stuff, but I had, just a lot of questions with it. And there's truthfully, some things I find concerning in there. And I I don't know, there's a productive meeting to talk through. Unfinalized document and nitpick details that aren't really going to benefit this document. Cause we're not going to take, you know, points of B and put it into the comp plan. It's more, my understanding is just more the general tone that we're moving forward with. So although it'd be probably interesting. And I like it, like it'd be, it'd be fun.
And I appreciate the work they've done.
Yeah. Yeah. I, anybody else have feelings on that?
I think if we were ahead of schedule on what we need to do, it would make more sense, but we're not, so.
Hey, we're behind schedule now because it's nine.
Could, could we invite their comments until, you know, just invite their comments in those sections that, um, we've already reviewed? Uh, possibly as a part of instead.
You mean for the whole comp plan?
Of course, but they would, I, they could look at the the different elements that we've already reviewed and insert any additional comments regarding, you know, something that we've missed. And then, because we're also going to do a separate, uh, climate action, uh, element. Is that?
We'll call it that too. Incorporating the climate action plan that's approved by council into the periodic update will have a mission. But that's general, but there's a lot of action items. Then we have the climate element grant from commerce that runs you next June. So, uh, oh, by the way, your planning commission work plan complaint was approved. So it's complan all year. So, uh, and it's not like June comes and you're like, oh, there's a periodic update. Hey, what are you going to work on? It's the climate element itself, three years early. And it's at the policy level, so it's different than the climate action plan, but same topic, same issues, same discussion. That might be a better time to have a joint meeting. Um, and, uh, in the next week, we have to form a climate policy advisory. And then go to city council on the twenty eighth and frame it for that climate element. Uh, and the discussion of city council Thursday night was, it should consist primarily of CAC members and PC members. The council comment and consensus was, see, any city council involved, involvement should be the essence. And so the CAC joint meeting input on the climate element should be summer onward. Probably a mix of PC and C. But, um.
So when would that joint committee form or you think?
In March. Yeah. So staff's going to do that. We we have the, we've been awarded five hundred thousand for the climate element grant. We did the first introduction at city council last week. They're going to do a second touch on March twenty eighth. Somewhere in there, we're going to do step one on the scope, which is form this advisory. We're also going to, going to, draft an RQ, publish it and circulate. With hope that we will get, uh, consultants submitting that we could review and evaluate and get a, contractor services to do the climate element, set that in place and then make it seamless between what you're doing. A periodic updating climate. So the two meetings ago, it was summarize that, let's get good, then better. And then at some point in twenty twenty five, get the full best. It is the type of, yeah, there you go. So it all relates. Their their impression is they want to meet now because they want to emphasize climate action plan right now. Get going. We're ready. And it somewhat conflicts with the periodic update, but it's very consistent with the climate element.
Does anybody have any other feelings about David and I?
But if they could comment, if if there's anything that we've missed that, you know, gives them a lot of heartache, the areas we've already.
Melissa, how how do you, you okay with that? Do we, we don't want to all add a third special meeting? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're eight minutes in. Lot of time to talk about new business. They, they, they want to.
Are we going to skip over the climate piece?
Yeah, do you want to do a climate speedrun, um, or pass on climate for the rest of this meeting?
The pleasure of everyone.
If we want to go through a few of the slides, or if we have to try to do a speedrun, I mean, we talked about it already a little bit, so.
Okay.
I have one general comment. The, uh, the table's good. We're on track. It's generally consistent. And there's much less staff notes on this.
I think with this one is because we were like waiting to see actual language, right? So.
But one other general comment will completely prior to three, it's community outreach for their comp plan. It's on six thirties to seven thirties, we all require.
I didn't know our comments were like this, Christina, but when we talked about the environmental portion or the climate portion last week, I think the general recommendations you had about the sections of the, comp plan where it made sense to address particular comments or concepts. I don't know if we had any fundamental disagreement with that. To Ashton's point, I think, you know, we were preserving until we saw the actual language, but directionally, those sections seemed, in line with what we're all thinking.
Including deferring future subjects to the next iteration of.
Okay, so everyone was comfortable with the the areas we recommended to defer?
Generally, and as as in your notes, there's a couple, but generally, yes.
Okay, that's fantastic. Um. I. Let's see, well, I think we've, we've already talked about most of what I was going to present tonight. You know, at a high level, the GMA now requires climate planning, um, will be doing a climate, a climate element, uh, that is starting kind of as, um, your work on the comp plan is wrapping up. Um, so those processes will run parallel. What we're doing through the end of this year, as Mark has already said, is incorporating the climate action plan. The framework for that is essentially, the comp plan will set up some policy language and the climate action plan will be seen more as the implementation, plan, which is consistent with how it's named and how it's envisioned and what the Climate Action Committee, um, has been working towards. So, um, that's kind of, how the plan hierarchy, um, is is envisioned, um, going forward. And then the climate element will do, more of that policy language and be adopted into the comp plan, uh, by the end of next year. The takeaways that I was hoping to get today, uh, it's, we've already gone through pretty much everything. The only outstanding questions that I had were if there were any missing topics that you think need to be addressed in the comp plan at this time. And if there are any, uh, any concerns with any of the policies in, the climate action plan, um, that we need to be aware of. With any of the policies in the climate action plan, um, that we need to be aware of as we're, as we're writing those policies.
You don't recall any of us having anything that was, seems like it's not a bit of a legacy.
You know, there was one thing that was discussed during the, uh, the CAC meeting, uh, there, they want to, uh, work with consultant. Uh, with the equitable, Mark, you could probably speak to that more clearly than I can, but they want to. They don't think they have the expertise to look at the equity part or that, uh, the quality part of the, the, uh, climate action plans, so they're, they want to work with a consultant.
We will get language to see, I mean, I, I, you guys are putting together language, and I feel like I'll have more meaningful comments when I actually see them. Um, and I think that's when we can probably talk more specifically about the equity or some of the, the policies that. You know, that we talked about today too.
And they're not ready yet.
I do have one comment, though, I'm, you know, I noticed that, you know, SR five twenty-two is such a big street. Uh, and, you know, they're talking about multimodal and pedestrian, it'd be nice if there was just some mention of. Uh, again, just mitigating SR five twenty-two, so that it can become, you know, uh, uh, more. Uh, there's no language on that, that document.
Okay, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll make a note, we can definitely address that in more than one place.
It is surprising that that's not.
That'd be nice, just for consistency, just, it's an important issue for the city.
And then Christine, I, I know you heard our earlier conversations, but just another point for, for us, for this group to consider, it's just that equity language. So once we actually see it, we'll probably have some more specific meaningful commentary around it.
Yeah, absolutely, so, um, all of the new elements that you see going forward will have. Climate-related policies developed for them, and we'll also be revisiting the elements that we've already touched on. With some new recommendations that related to climate planning. So, um, we put some placeholder information in there now, um, and we'll flesh that out and bring that back.
Alrighty, um, did we lose any, was there any public comments or citizen comments? Oh, Don. Thanks, Don, um, floor is yours. Do we have to view it? Oh, now you can talk. Uh, but you're on mute. Hey, Don, we'd like to. Hear from you, oh, there you go.
Am I loud now?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, my point, uh, being, um, you were talking about mailing, uh. To all of the citizens in Lake Forest Park, there, there is a, a method that you can use through the post office called EDDM. And you can mail to probably ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of the residents of Lake Forest Park and eight and a half by eleven. Um, flyer colored both sides for around forty-five hundred dollars.
Cool.
Just wanted to pass that.
Yeah, thank you. It's Don, um, I saw there was someone else on there, is there any other comments? Okay. Alrighty, it's nine o'clock on the nose, um, Jennifer, next meeting, what are we doing next? Yeah, I know, surprise us here.
Well, I imagine, uh, materials will be strikeout underlines for transportation and, uh, likely climate and then.
Housing, it's housing.
Are we having the housing?
Housing, yes, uh, in fact, I just got an email this evening from Leland asking, uh, to have a, a pre-meeting with you, Mark. So that we could talk about where things are at and what will be presented, so that's happening, it's housing.
I'm all for that, I'll meet any time, then the question becomes, uh, when fair and peers and SCJ have. Strikeout underlines, how do you want to introduce them as materials?
So I, I think that the recommendations that were in the memo and presented in the slideshow were their actual suggested policy language. So at this point will be to have those inserted into the transportation element. Uh, and amended where appropriate, as discussed by this commission tonight. Um, we'll have some places where there needs to be a little bit more input, where you all had questions, um. But I think the next time we talk about housing, I think it will be a much shorter discussion, I hope it will be a much shorter discussion. Um, anyway, uh, because hopefully there won't be quite so much, um. Uh, new information to cover, um, anyway, I think I need to confirm what their schedule looks like. Uh, and where they're at with their technical analysis, I mean. Think it will be April, but I need to, I need to double check with them.
Thank you.
Housing element, February fourth. Cool, I'm in April.
Yeah.
Somebody want to adjourn, please, I'm running. Second, all favor. Okay, great, we'll see you in February.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone, see you in February.